Being that it's 7:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order with a roll call.
Huber.
Here.
Loest.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Hummel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Okay, we've all had time to review last month's minutes as open for discussion or we can approve them.
Move approval, Loest.
Second, Huber.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Hey, we have the agenda in front of us for June 10th, 2025. You want to approve said agenda or any additions or changes?
No.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second, Loest.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and let's discuss conflict of interest declarations.
Loest, none.
Kettering, none.
Welsh, none.
Hummel, none.
Huber, none.
Or none.
Clark, none.
Okay, being said, we can move on to a plat.
Yep, I've got the first one up, GTNR Farms LLC plat, plat of tract one, M&amp;T Monkfold addition in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 19. T96 North, range 55 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. It's a farmstead, but they've got 20 acres.
Yeah.
So either way, it can.
When does the 10 acre go into effect? Is it in effect now?
No, we still, I think the 20th of June is when that goes into effect, 19th or 20th, I'd have to check.
Do you have any discussions on this free plat?
Move approval, Loest.
Second, Kettering.
Roll call vote.
Huber.
Aye.
Loest.
Aye.
Kettering.
Aye.
Hummel.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Clark.
Yes.
This is another farmstead plat. They basically surveyed off this corner, seven point some acres under the farmstead, 513.
Move approval, Loest.
Second, O'Hara.
Roll call vote.
Huber.
Aye.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Aye.
Um, excuse me, O'Hara.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Clark.
Yes.
Still left two minutes.
Go ahead.
While we're waiting a couple of minutes, we had a request to possibly revisit the setback from the blue lines for for solar, so we'll have it on the agenda for next month, but we currently have 660 feet and a lot of our surrounding counties only have 100 feet for for solar, so just something to think about for the next month and we'll have more discussion next month on the agenda.
So what is that setback for, Gary?
Just where we can put and how far we gotta be from a blue line. And yeah.
Moving on to our 7:05 agenda item, conditional use permit for Dollar General.
Applicant is requesting a condition to use permit in the Lakeside Commercial District to place two illuminated signs on the property per Article 14, Section 1403, number four, Article 18, Section 1805, and Article 19, Section 1905. Said property is legally described as the north two acres of the west 11 rods excluding lot H-3 in the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, section 15, Township 93 North, range 56 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, E901 address is 706 Kalia Street. The section for Article 14, Section 14, number four, 1403, number four, if you're within 1500 feet of residents, you have to get a condition to use for a lighted sign. So that's what they're asking for. The difference between this illuminated sign and some of the other ones we've had, the illumination is from the inside, there will be no exterior lights shining down or up at the sign. One sign will be placed. Building's not there, but the front of the building, there'll be one on the facade and then one out, smaller one by the highway. And I think Brittany was was online if you have questions.
Are there hours of operation?
That's a good question. Let me see if she actually checked.
Hi there, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So I am not aware of their hours of operation, but I have discussed the hours that the sign will be illuminated and they will have an electrician either put a time clock or a photo eye on the signs which will turn them on when dusk comes, so roughly 5 o'clock, and then the signs will be off at 10:00 PM.
Can you have her clarify the ending time? I think she said 10:00 PM, but I just want to clarify because I did talk to the neighboring property owner and that was kind of their viewpoint.
That's correct. They have told me 10:00 PM would be the time that the sign would go off.
If memory serves, that's similar to what we did with like Fire and Ice, right? Okay. Yeah. And so steady state light, it's not flashing.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be a yeah, kind of a clear plastic front with the lights inside.
Sign and light.
Sign and light, a square sign or rectangular that's smaller, you know, they're limited how big their signs can be for those type of things. So I think it's like six by six. It's small. Yeah, it's pretty small. The one on the building will be larger, obviously.
Does anyone want to take a lead on going through the findings of fact or want me to? Sure can.
So 1805, number five, subpart A is ingress and ingress to property and proposed structures thereon with particular reference to automotive and pedestrian safety. Since this is a sign, we've already went through the building setup, so probably doesn't apply. B is off right of way parking and loading areas where required. C is refuse and service areas. D is utilities with reference to locations, availability and compatibility. E is screening and buffering with reference to type, dimension and character. F is signs, if any, and proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic safety, economic effect and compatibility and harmony with properties in the district. Item G is required yards and other open spaces and H is general compatibility with adjacent properties and other property in the district and that the granting of the CUP will not adversely affect the public interest.
Discussion?
I drove by the site tonight and there are cedar trees that screen the residence to the east from the store.
And a big house.
Hmm. Yeah, a trailer. The house will probably move, but the cedar trees will be there.
No other discussion, we can open for public comment before we make a motion. Public comments open. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Okay, at your leisure, commission.
Move approval, Welsh.
With, are you gonna move with no conditions or do you wanna set the condition that it's that 10:00 PM is the latest? Yeah, just make sure.
Informs.
Okay. I'll second that, Huber.
Okay, roll call vote.
Huber.
Aye.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Moved. Okay, move on to 710, conditional use permit.
All right, Jamesville, Hutterian, did I say that right, brethren? Applicant is requesting a conditional use permit in an agriculture district for a Class A concentrated animal feeding operation per Article 5, Section 507, Article 18, Section 1805, and Article 19, Section 1905. Applicant wishes to construct a concentrated animal feeding operation to house 5,600 head swine finishers over 55 pounds. Said property is described as a south half of the southwest quarter in section four, Township 96, range 56 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. They've been working on this for quite a while. We've met with them numerous times just trying to find the best location. This is the site they chose. You've seen all the information in the packet. There's a lot to absorb there. There, the people that made those documents are here to answer questions. But I will say that Matthew, he didn't just pick a spot, he looked for what he thought was the best for everybody around it to make it the best possible situation.
Okay. We wanna listen to the applicant first or do you wanna start discussion? Applicant can.
I would think it would be a good idea for the applicant or the representatives of the company that did the engineering site study to come forward and go through each of the documents in the package for so that we can ask questions about them.
Questions back here.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
The five, the engineer is five minutes away.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you're welcome.
That'll be fine. You can come up first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, Joe Gunther, Nutrient Advisors. Do you guys have the packets in front of you?
No, they should be on the website.
Yeah, Bill can, Bill can help you pull it up.
It's It was so big, we had to do it separately.
Right.
So there's the first part of it, that'll probably be Brian's part. Okay, let's see what it says. When the application, do you remember what you know that was?
Hmm.
Packet five. So I mean, when to get to yours. I bet where.
I think they're Jamesville.
I think it's five.
Yeah.
If you got 70 mails. It's all.
Nine, wasn't it?
Attachments for Oregon.
Uh, nine. Still is. This is ours.
Okay.
The stuff I'd like to show is probably previous to this. Yeah, so the first one we had. Yep, here we go.
Okay.
There. All right, this, this is where we start. So the nutrient management plan, so, so we wrote is the manure generation numbers and the land application sites, the fields that are going to utilize the manure. This, this page right here is a summary of those fields and this is all DA and R regulated applications. So the DA and R and peer is reviewing this and approving this application. This is what we send off to them. You can just see right here, we got the field names, there, there are six fields that are currently in the nutrient management plan and only those six fields can receive manure. Any, any field that's going to receive from manure from these barns will have to be approved in the nutrient management plan to DNR specs. This is just.
Excuse me, what's your first name?
Joe.
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 Um. Item. Our zoning ordinance, Section 519. Item one. C. I. States all CUP applicants must submit and receive approval for a waste management plan to the Department of Environment and Natural Resources prior to obtaining a CUP. Have you received approval?
My name is John Gunderson. I have been through this process at some exhaustion. Uh. They can't, the state can't approve the CUP until they have the building permit because they have to see the facility plan so they can apply. But it can't be approved until it goes through the county process and then goes to the state. That's what we went through.
Hmm.
And that has not changed. I understand what you're saying. But yeah, you've got to approve the COP and the building permit separately. And those documents then go up and sit on a desk and peer and are dealt with. And according, it's not the other way around. The county is a child of the state, so.
Are the building permit and the conditional use permit separate?
Yes.
And so are we considering the building permit tonight?
You are considering the COP tonight. I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on TV. Okay, but.
I'm not either.
Okay, but you, you were considering the COP, which they have applied for, and by the way, this is the best CUP I've seen since my wife wrote one. And but this has to be completed and go through the county process and approved. And then because of the time, COPs don't expire, but building, building permits essentially do.
I'm sure.
Say this gets delayed until December, it's against our constructions and you get your building permit, but you still have to have all the paperwork before you go to the state because they need to know what they're gonna move by.
Well, I agree with you that the presentation was, the package was very professional.
Answer your question, so the CUP has to go through here, county commission, get approval, and then they can apply for a building permit and then they have to meet all the requirements of the building permit.
Our, our zoning ordinance is in black and white.
So are the state regulations.
Right, and so somebody obviously will have to resolve this. And I don't think that we're gonna resolve it tonight because what we have is in black and white right in front of me. Joe, why don't you go up and why don't you kind of slog through this for us, this presentation? Do you have a few questions? Are any of those fields currently in another land use agreement for manure?
No.
Okay. Then you're welcome to keep on going.
Okay, as you can see, as we, as we scroll through this document, right here, I want to show you, we have, we have 865.7 acres available for land application. If you look earlier, there was a higher number, we have to subtract out setback acres. Setback acres are along wells, along creeks, waterways, so there's 865.7 applicable acres available. I'll try to zoom in here. Total pounds of nitrogen phosphorus available for crops, that's what's generated from this barn. 77,002 for phosphorus. Total pounds of MP required for the fields, 146. Adequate acres are available based on nitrogen analysis. So, so that is the, that is the main thing is we, I wanted to show we have double the acres. There's plenty of farm ground that will utilize the nutrients off this hog barn. And then as we continue through the packets. Uh. Injection, that, that is the only method of application we're gonna have, inject the oxer in the ground. That'll be within. That is going to be regulated by the state. They will ensure that that's injected. And then, and then we have our sites here, fields are going to receive it. And all the different requirements required from a DNR review. Soil samples, erosion studies, calculations on the fields and the agreements with the landowners. And then that is just continues on the application sites. Any other questions?
Did you do the entire appendix B or just the part that you've talked about?
Just the nutrient management plan. I think Brian's here now. He did the, the engineering portion of the application.
Okay. You have other questions for Joe? No, we'll have the engineer come up. Just state your name for the record, please.
Name is Brian Frederickson. I'm a registered professional engineer with Vantage Point Solutions, formerly with Dakota Environmental, something you may be familiar with. We were hired to assist with the technical aspects of putting this barn design together for Jamesville. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Should I start over or?
No.
That'd be good. Okay. Like I said, we were hired to put together the, the technical aspects of the engineering of both the state and county permit applications for Jamesville. The packet that was submitted to the board was prepared to address the requirements of the ordinance as far as the land use stipulations of the ordinance. The facility, facility itself is a single deep pit hog barn. Very similar design and layout to many that we've done. The state permitting, and Joe may have covered some of this before I came in, the state permitting would be completed and submitted to them for all plans and, plans and specifications for approval for the entire facility along with the nutrient management plan. I guess if there are any specific questions, I would entertain those.
If you could scroll up to the, to the inspection routine and appendix B.
Yeah.
Go on. I think uh. See.
You might have.
You're on the wrong, uh click on the.
Yeah, the site are overhearing. There you go, it should be down waste bill.
Got it.
There you go, that's it.
Okay.
Who will be doing those inspections?
The applicant is responsible for the uh routine inspect, routine inspections of the facility. The applicant is responsible for the routine inspections. Um, then they are also subject to uh the D A N R's uh O N M inspections as well.
How often does D A N R uh inspect?
For larger facilities, their uh frequency is supposed to be annual. Now, I, they have gotten behind on that somewhat during, as a result of COVID, so some of those have stretched out a little bit. In all honesty.
Is there any reporting from the uh owner operator to a uh second party who can review those inspection reports?
The owner is required to keep records of all inspections and uh records of all land application, rate calculations through the nutrient management plan, and those are reviewed at the D A N R O N M inspections.
I see. Um. The checklist appears to be very thorough. Uh, the language in the paragraph above is not quite as categorical as it might be. And so it says the owner acknowledges responsibility for proper operation and maintenance of the animal waste management system. Although the design is based on the best available technical knowledge, it must be recognized that any system contains some risks, therefore needs to be properly oper- operated, maintained, including periodic inspection. Um. Let's see, so. Recognizing this, the manual has been prepared for operating and maintaining the system. The following list. Uh. The anticipated major and uncommon op- items of operation maintenance in this system. It is recommended that the following list be reviewed. So it's recommended. Will the what mechanism is there to ensure that that checklist will be used on a regular basis?
This document is reviewed by D A N R as part of the uh general permit submission submission package, and then the requirements of it are reviewed during O N M inspections.
See.
Can I help you answer that question?
Yes.
Yeah.
These are all regulations with the D A N R. So 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 the mechanism is the permit they're going to receive from the state that says these have to be done, and our company assists with help maintaining those records, training, consulting, educating the personnels that are in the hog barn on how to maintain these records.
On an ongoing basis?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
Yes.
So there is a second set of eyes.
Yes. We we take the soil samples, we do the great calculations, we take the manure samples, we do the nutrient budgeting, we ensure the stuff is in compliance, and then we are there to help assist the operation and 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 the the regulators too, when they come and do their inspection.
Well, that's a relief. Uh, so um. You do the soil samples in the fields where the manure is injected to ensure that the potassium and nitrate levels are proper?
Yep.
Do you also do soil samples near the facility itself?
Yeah, we 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 soil sample, so 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 what we do is we soil sample the ground, we figure out which fields best need the nutrients, right? Because everybody wants the same thing, that the environment, agronomics, and economics, all want nutrients spread to the right acres, right? So so we're doing a base fertility study, we're getting the fields prioritized, which fields need the manure first, and then we go and soil sample those fields according to their permit and the D A N R regulations before manure is applied, figure out how much nitrogen's in the field, how much phosphorus in the field, do our calculations, and determine the rate that the manure needs to be.
And this will be an ongoing basis through the life of the uh facility, is that correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, as long as they have a permit with the D A N R, that is the regulation.
Glad to hear it. Um. The the facility itself. Um, will there be water quality monitoring wells near the facility?
You know, it's on the plan, I don't think.
That is determined by the review of the groundwater division in peer when they review the permit application. If they feel there is risk to any nearby water resources, they will require wells.
That's the state?
Yes.
Good. Um. The reason I'm asking all these questions is because this is a big investment. And it looks to me as if these people have done a very assiduous job of putting this package together, and I want to make sure, you know, for their benefit, as well as for the county's benefit, that these things are clarified. Very important. Uh, so I I'm going to guess that the cost of this facility, six million. Fifty thousand square foot barn plus all. And so, you know, just good business practice uh would indicate that you you want to protect yourself. And that's why I'm so happy to hear that there'll be an ongoing third party involved who will be monitoring the operation, and that you won't be just doing the inspections yourself, but you'll be able to point to a third party who's monitoring the operation. And if and if you're not planning water quality wells, uh, it might be something you should consider. And the reason I say that is because it appears to me that in that area, the land form slopes from northwest to southeast, more or less like the James River does. I don't think it would be terribly expensive relative to a six million dollar facility to drill three or four water quality monitoring wells uh to the southeast of the facility. Um. And again, the reason I'm bringing this up is because my old friend, the concrete man, told me there's two things you can be sure of about concrete. One, it'll get hard, two, it'll crack. And so unless you have a rubberized uh liner, there will be some seepage out of a concrete containment system. And so just to protect yourself, you should have that in place so that if there's an issue in the future, you can show that you've done your due diligence. And it's not you, because there are other facilities like that in the area. So it's worth considering.
Have any other questions for Joe or Brian while they're up?
If I could just add on the on the subject of monitoring wells. Um. For those of you who uh might remember the last applications that were done down at the uh at the main colony site, uh, there's a large concrete tank that was installed as part of that application. Wells were installed around that at the time, which I believe was at least a dozen years ago, and those have been monitored continuously or quarterly at least ever since. Um, have no, have shown no signs of degradation from what the background levels were, so.
Good.
And so it it is a method that they're accustomed to.
I don't know who this is for, uh, but it's for someone, and that is, uh, I didn't have time to drive out to the of location this afternoon, but I noticed uh on Google Maps that that there are, I'm going to say a half a dozen residences within the one mile setback. Do we have written uh waivers? Boy, I must have missed that. I'm sorry.
All residents setbacks decide waivers.
Great, good to know. Good. My last uh uh item, and I I'm sure, I think this is for uh the owner and the county highway department, and that is that uh there needs to be some sort of a road haul agreement uh in place. There are going to be a lot of traffic, uh, feed trucks coming in, I estimate six or seven a week. Uh, animals coming out at various times, and and waste coming out. Those those trucks are heavy. And so uh I I would think that there should be a road haul agreement in place between the owner of this facility and the county highway department to ensure that any damage that's done by the trucks, first of all, that the roads are capable of handling that traffic, and secondly, that the uh that the uh any damage that is done either to the roads or culverts or bridges is uh that the owner will stand behind that.
They make mention of it in their letter, but in our ordinance, it does state that road haul routes and road maintenance agreements for both the construction and operation of the facility shall shall be signed by the applicant and local road authority and included in the C U P. I know you made mention of it in your letter, but um, that's definitely could be, or will probably will be a condition we'll throw on there, so that way we have that prior to, so. But like I said, you brought it up in your letter that you guys were aware and wanted to do something, so.
And that was expected to be a condition of.
Yeah.
Approval. So.
Joe, would you want to talk about the injection and as far as the damage of those?
Yep, yep. So so the primary method of manure application is going to be drag line. So so what we're going to do is we're going to have a the pump at the barn, run it through hoses and inject it behind a tractor that's going to continually be operating in the field. So we're going to try to avoid using trucks on the roads the best we can.
Yeah, I noticed that all the fields are in close proximity to the uh to the site. So you won't need trucks to haul there?
Nope.
Very, very good. Um.
You guys got a general permit for that site yet or no? Or is that comes after us again? Just like the other permitting process, you guys wait for county approval?
Yeah, this this submittal, it's uh before you was prepared um with the expectation, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, I missed most of that discussion. Um. That the uh building permits, if approved by this commission and the county commission, would all be conditioned upon uh receiving all the D A N R permits necessary.
Okay.
So yes, there there's an extensive process remaining.
Our our ordinance is ordinance is keep saying prior to, prior to, but it sounds like from people who have gone down that road is that maybe that's not how it works in the real world, so.
Well, that's.
Just want to make sure.
That that's, that's up to you. I.
No, I just want to make sure I was understanding.
It should be a condition.
Yeah.
Uh, I. It. We should probably rewrite our ordinance, but it could be made a condition of the conditional use permit that it's invalid unless uh D A N R uh issues a permit and the state or issues a general permit. That's a way of getting around it.
A general permit is required by the county as a condition of approval now.
Okay. Any other questions?
How many turns a year do you expect to uh out of that with with the mature hogs coming out of the building?
Between two and two and a half.
Two and a half?
At the most, yeah.
Yeah, and you put how many hogs on a truck?
Hundred and seven.
Hundred and seven?
Seventy.
Hundred and seventy? Okay, so we're not talking about gigantic number of trips.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe or Brian? Mike? Good? Got some people from the public here, so we can always circle back if they
Right.
get something going that we want to bring up with Joe and Brian. Thank you, guys. So we will open it for public comment. Come up, you know, I'll probably time you, keep it to three minutes and state your name at the beginning, please.
Um, my name is Ron Schaefer. I am, uh, I live in, uh, I live less than a mile away from the hog site, and but there's an imaginary line uh because I'm in Hutchinson County. I own property right next to the hog site also. And uh personally, I pro and con, I'm neither, take neither side, but my wife is is much opposed. So uh, I looked at the uh the information that I saw on on the website, and um, right now, there's trees on two sides of the hog unit. And um actually, I did talk to Matt today, and I requested that they put trees on the third side. And um, a little short story, I I sold property to another uh Yankton County resident, and the promise was to put trees next to the barn, and it was all platted out. Uh, time went on, and after it was, uh, the agreement was made, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, he decided, the engineers decided that they needed to move up on the property, and the the hog barn uh producer I didn't want to buy more property, and I didn't feel like I needed to donate property for trees to for the site. So um I would request that there is uh trees that are planted uh on the third side, which would be the east side of the site. And um, I just want to address one other thing regarding the D D A N R. Um. Uh, I visited with uh Hutchinson County, um, the zoning administrator, and I asked about the D A N R, and his comment was, is that the D A N R is so busy that the only thing they're doing is is dealing with complaints, and there's there's no annual inspection actually being done by the D A N R. It's strictly putting out fires. And um, so I think that's kind of critical that that is is addressed also. And um.
So so how would you address that?
I I I don't know, I don't know the answer.
You're gonna.
Well, you 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 can't make the state do their job.
Okay.
I I I believe, but I I don't know the answer.
So what are you putting on us?
I don't, I don't, I don't really know, but I I I guess I don't see that it's necessarily going to happen just because um I I don't think the D A N R at this point in time is going to get the job done. Um. Uh, the other, there is possible some other sites discussed, uh, but one of the things that comes into play is the setback. Um, in my opinion, the setbacks that you have from the roads is excessive. And um, I guess at some point in time, I I think that that could be addressed. That eliminated another site that was, had greater distance from residences because of the setbacks being.
Did you go to the D A N R meetings where we discussed that in the last year?
I have not, no.
Okay, and so we've done that for two, three years, four years. We've been working on that for years. We probably invited you to come with them.
Right, uh, but I'm I'm in Hutchinson County, so um, I I don't come to Yankton County meetings. Were you going to say something?
Just telling your time's up, but I do appreciate you coming in, and
Okay.
I I did add a note for the screening. Um. That was something that is in our ordinance is to talk about the screening, you know, with the trees and stuff like that, so. Um, anyway.
The trees will be required on on three sides instead of two sides?
Depends on how the commission lays out the vote, right?
Very good.
But I definitely wrote your note down, just so that way it's a condition, so. Any other public comment?
Johnson, Wallen, uh, I lived the hog wars several years back. I applied for a building permit in two thousand seventeen. It was tied up in court until the end of two thousand eighteen. And I was sued by thirty, forty people, and the closest one lived two and a quarter miles away. And I was sued by thirty, forty people and the closest one lived two and a quarter miles away. The farthest one was living in Sioux Falls. And I'm sorry, I'm old school. I figure that you're an American. It's a free country. You want to feed the country, feed the world, you ought to be able to. The concern over the manure to me is the biggest joke. That manure is the most valuable asset next to the meat itself coming out of that building. It is a wonderful organic fertilizer. The plants respond to it better than commercial fertilizer. And I can remember from the meetings when we were going through it, oh my God, it's, it's toxic, it's terrible, it's going to ruin everything. But yet if you put some out in the field and then skip the rest of the field, it goes from dark green to yellow. And the roads were going to get ruined. That was another thing. None of the county roads, there were two township roads that really got beat up and the barn owners paid to fix them. The taxpayers didn't. We put up signs all over the county, no through trucks, twenty five hundred dollar fine. Well, then we had to go back and change that to five hundred dollar fine. And eight years later, I don't think there's ever been anybody fined for running a through truck. So that money wasn't in my mind well spent. I did just soon hit a bridge someplace I could drive across. But I mean, anything and everything. We've got cheap grain here because we're too far from any market and if we can get local demand going, and if you don't believe me, look at the guys that are feeding cattle right now. And one thing about a farmer, when they make money, they spend money. And when they're not making money and they're not making money grain farming, the rest of the town is going to suffer, the rest of the county is going to suffer. And how are you going to increase your tax base if you don't let people invest in the county? Thank you.
Ray up Mission Hill. Century Hog Farm, Hog and Hay Farm, Yankton County. There's been hogs on that farm for a hundred year, hundred and seven years now. We got proof of it. So in that aspect, in order for a fourth generation now, there had to be progress and expansion. We're just one family. The last time we built was in ninety-eight, when that barn went up. And that was to get me onto farm. I wouldn't have been able to move up here if that barn didn't be here yet, if that barn wasn't built. I hear some interesting comments up here. The one barn up there on the hill there, the three hundred head was built in seventy-nine. And the only time there's seepage from that blasted pit is when Ray doesn't get it pumped. And it's coming up through the slats, not out into the ground. And I get my hind ending gear and get that one pumped out. So the concrete, you gotta remember that, that, that thesis might plug cracks too. It may not all drain out. So that aspect. Our brethren, our friends to brethren, look at how big a colony is. Look at what it takes for a family to try and make it. How many families are involved with our friends? We, you talk about a six million dollar investment, holy Hannah. You don't think they're going to take care of things if there's that much money in there? This aspect of, of the ground. I just finished cleaning off a hay field. Seventy-three acre hay field, four hundred and thirty-five bales off it. And there's been poop put out there four times and you can't tell me that that nice green hay I built, that that power of the pig poop didn't pull it. It's wonderful stuff and we monitor, I have my ground analyzed for nutrient content. So I know I, I'm too small to have the state take care of me. So I take care of myself. I don't need the damn state to take care of me. I'm going to take care of myself for another two generations on that farm. And so I have my soils analyzed, so I know exactly how much I put out there to get my two hundred and fifty bushel corn. And that damn soybeans that don't produce seventy bushels, but I'm, I'm still trying to get there. We do these things so that we can feed the country. Going to the store and price pork. We, we've almost gotten cheaper than chickens since then. They're foul, they die. So eat more pork. So look at, look at the price there. We're going to take care of the people because most pork producers are involved with pork producers. And our motto is we care. We care because we want people to have healthy food, sustainable food. I'm kicked out. Well, have a good day.
Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening. I'm the attorney for the colony. I did make note of the road hall agreement. And then one thing that hasn't been discussed tonight is the positive impact to the property taxes. So I just would like to make note of that because obviously investing in land is going to increase property values and which in turn brings more of the county and the school system. Thank you. Kiara Luddy.
John Gunderson, Irene. First of all, sir, I invite you out to look at my roads. I have three miles of road that I have to take care of because I'm not on a county road. I'm on a township road. I gravel that road. I grade that road. That road is my personal private little. And I get mad when somebody hurts it. I've been doing that since twenty nineteen when we built during the flood. As of the permitting process, it is a dual track. But the state can't proceed without a building permit and the building permit is not effective until the state agrees. There were several, four or five lawsuits about this that ended up in front of a judge. And the judge looked at the regulations and they have changed. And we followed the process. Our, we had our first court case. Got an advisory opinion in October, got the final opinion in December. We got our building permit as a Christmas present, the day after Christmas. Sent it to the state, it sat up in the state and didn't get approved until the end of April. And that's when it became effective. Which was a big deal because there was a hurrah about why aren't you building in the middle of a flood? Because I couldn't get Noah and the ark up to Germany. Second thing I want to point out, no offense to our engineers, but I had a geologist come in and I am in a similar area geologically. That's an old lake bed up there. Do you remember cuts through it? I'm sitting on five hundred feet of clay.
I know.
And the first fifty feet has managed to get water since the glacier in the lake broke twelve thousand years ago. Leaking up in that country ain't a problem. Trucks. Oh, I love trucks. I have neighbors that have a hundred and twenty thousand bushel bin sites. Nobody makes them get road use agreements. That's a hundred and twenty truckloads in and a hundred and twenty truckloads out. And that's a heck of a lot more trucks than I get in a year. And yeah, let's point the finger at the hogs guys because they got all sorts of money. That's not true. And it is not fair. We had a big argument when we were building our barns about how many yards of concrete you could get in a ten yard truck. And you would not believe how many people couldn't figure that question out. I mean, this is a sort of, you know, stuff that drives me mad. One last thing, trees. We planted trees on two sides of our barn. The third side goes down into. And I had one comment. I only put, you only planted trees because you have to look at the barn.
Thank you. Any other public comment? He wants to come. He's thinking about it. Oh, he's coming.
My name is Tim Curvis. I'm with New Standard out of Sioux Falls. We're involved more on the equipment and the design of the actual.
You pick up a little bit?
Spring wraps, that'll help a bit. Is that better? We're involved more on the equipment design side, so we'll be involved in the ventilation and to address the issue about trees. And, and, and any kind of odor that might obviously, that is why the request came up, that might occur. Trees don't grow overnight. You can't plant a tree that's thirty feet tall, so it will take a while. Manure is an asset, like it's already been brought up. If you can smell it, you're losing some value. So our objective is always to make things work as well as possible to reduce this smell because ammonia smells, ammonia is just nitrogen that isn't stabilized yet in a sense, in layman's terms. So we've gone through a lot of different things. There is some new technologies that we will be applying. One of the biggest things that will help for this is pit aeration, which is relatively new to the industry. And what that does is actually inject fresh air into the manure itself in the pit, which will generate more bacterial activity within the barn. And that actually reduces ammonia. I don't know that there's true testing on that. All anecdotal stuff that I've heard is a reduction of at least fifty percent of ammonia generated. So there's going to be a significant reduction in what most people might have in their mind in the first place. Second to that, barns usually smell worse in winter because the, the air is tends to be with a lot of pit ventilation pushed out horizontally, or it has been traditionally. What we'll be doing in this barn is actually ventilating for lower levels during colder weather vertically through pit chimneys, if you will. So we'll still be doing pit ventilation, but it'll be vertically exhausted, which will actually reduce a lot of nose level smell. So there's a lot of things, and those, I'm just touching on a few of them. There's a lot comes into the engineering, but that, those are the primary things that might apply, which even before the trees grow tall and act as a bit of a biofilter, that it won't even be what most people traditionally would have in their mind in the first place.
Thank you. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Discussion.
Just for a little added background, I contacted Mike, the highway superintendent, just to see what had been done in the past. He didn't take over till two thousand nineteen, but he didn't think there were any road hall agreements with the previous barns. And I went through the files and couldn't find anything. So just so you, to show you where it was done in the past.
Which road does this sit on again?
Four thirty-six. And
Two ninety-two?
Six and two ninety-second. Yeah. So it'll be approximately right here. Isn't that right? Comes through here, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
I don't see a problem with it. This, this application has blew my mind how well put together it is and how thoughtful it is. With the road agreement, I, I really don't see a need for the road agreement because the county doesn't even maintain the gravel roads mostly. It's the townships or the farmers that do it themselves. County is more, you know, taking care of Kaiser Road more than anything. So they're not out there. And Yankton Thrive, they, they love money and they're in favor of hog barns. I know they are because it brings money to the county. So Nancy would love this. So.
So why is this a CUP?
In the ordinance, there are two levels, A and B, depending on how many animal units there are. And so this meets the class A.
Okay.
So.
So, and because of the head size?
Yeah, I think what's the smallest? I think it's two ninety-nine. Or hundred to two ninety-nine is the smallest. Anything over that is a class A. So this is a class A and this is well over the smaller size.
Which requires a CUP.
Yep.
Just size home, setback, not anything else?
Well, the setbacks come into play when it triggers the CUP.
True.
So then we have to go to that part of the ordinance and yes.
But they meet all the setbacks.
Correct.
And more.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, there's a lot of money in this room. You can tell engineers and lawyers and, and professionals and I think Yankton County is a farming county. And I think we should try and foster that. Especially, you know, family farms. Like that's the number one goal of, of all of us should be is to keep that farming community because it, it brings in income, just like you said. So I, I think it's an excellent report. A lot of information and a pretty good job.
I think I mentioned this earlier, but Matthew spent a lot of time and a lot of work to find the right place to do it. So I, I believe he'll take care of it with all the, all the time.
You can tell that by, you know, the low areas in the land where we saw that, you know, that you, you saw that they fit it into the right spot of that property.
Yep. He could have put it further to the west, but he chose to try to move, to move it east because it would have less effect on the, on the residents to the south. So this, it was a very well thought out application.
And i- is the colony in agreement with the set or third set of trees then? Is that? Over the ball, did you? I, I think that was the one condition or the, the request.
The request did.
So I struggle with the county boundary. Because I ask myself, what are the setbacks in Hutchinson? What are the requirements for their CUPs? Would they take into account ours? If the situation was reversed? And there was a hog barn sitting a half mile north of our county line. And anybody in this room lives south of that border and went to Hutchinson and said, hey, you need to follow our ordinance. Because I live in Yankton County, for me, you need to follow that. So I do struggle with that a little bit, especially when you have five Yankton County residents who have said, I am good with that because they don't meet the setbacks. Those people are saying, I am good with it. And how this application is being presented. And they've already offered to put trees on two sides. Prevailing winds northwest. So I struggle a little bit with, with requiring them to put trees on a third side because of that. The road hall agreement. And I didn't, I didn't bring my plat map. The mile just to the west of there is paved county road, correct? Is that four thirty-six?
Four thirty-seven is paved.
Six is paved.
Four thirty?
Four thirty-seven.
Six is paved. Okay. So they've got what? A half a mile of road to get to a paved county road? Is that right?
I don't think it's that worth.
Quarter mile. Okay. It's a quarter mile.
Yep.
You know, those are good, pretty decent roads up there, county roads. I, I don't think it's a requirement for Mike to okay that. I do think the township up there, which I think many of the people who live in this area are on the township board still, should be made aware of it. And I would think they would sign and say, we're okay with this. We're aware it's coming, no problem. We know the colony is going to take care of it, et cetera. So I do think it would be courteous to get that confirmation from that township. I don't think it's required that Mike says, yeah. You can haul the trucks off those because that's what our paved roads in our county are for. That's why they're there. And that, that goes right through the colony itself. Yes, if you're here for the township, come on up.
Pordell Monful. I just want you to know that I'm on the
Pardell Monfold. I just want you to know that I'm on the township board and Darren, Darren Kirshman's on the township board. Then we both signed off. I'm on board. So the township is aware.
Is aware.
Traffic and roads and stuff.
So do you think you could get something from the township to present at the board of adjustment meeting to say, we're aware of this? No special requirements?
Yeah.
Just to put it in the file because it is in our ordinance? I think that would be a prudent thing to do so that we have addressed it. Thank you so much for coming up. As far as the conflict between the state approval and the county CUP timing, probably something we need to address in there when we make a motion to approve this. I do think that needs to be in there, obviously, that that is a requirement on there. Road hall agreement. And I, I really think that's all. It was, it was an outstanding application. It really was. It matched the requirements and the ordinance step by step. You didn't have to hunt and search for things. So I greatly appreciate that. You can see the time that was invested in it.
That being said, do we have a motion on the floor? We have someone who wants to make a motion?
Any, oh, the one, one thing I do want to state, and this is just a pet peeve of mine. My opinion, no CUP application in front of this board should consider money. It should consider, does our ordinance allow it? Do they follow the regulations? We should not be approving things because we're going to get tax dollars. That is the wrong way to approach a planning ordinance. Just my soapbox.
My soapbox is that I don't agree with that.
And we respect each other's stance on that, so.
That's why we put you guys down there.
So is there any, any other discussion that? Are we ready for a motion?
Well, first of all, I'd like to accept the invitation to come out and look at your roads. And secondly, I agree that this was an okay. And secondly, I agree that this is a very, very professional application and that it covers all of the requirements. And I'm really happy to hear that we have written agreements by all of the residences in the area that they're willing to forego the setback requirement.
I think it shows a lot of trust in people doing it.
Going to make a motion, Mike?
I motion that we approve this CUP application with the condition that it is contingent upon the approval by the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources before it becomes effective.
It's actually called Department of Ag now and Natural Resources.
Bless them.
Yeah.
Another government agency changes its name and now we all have to spend thousands of dollars on new stationery.
I'll second. Lost.
Are, are we putting in there that with the condition that the township is providing a, a letter stating that they are aware of, of the operation and they support the operation and, and what it, you know, may do with, for the roads or something? Do we want to make sure that actually is added?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay. I mean, I don't think it changes the context.
I disagree with that. We've had comment from the township board that they're aware of it to put bar delays and, and requirements.
On record.
On record.
Yeah. So I mean, do we want the letter with our packet or do we want to use just the, the record, right?
It's on the record.
I think it's a record.
Yeah.
It's fine.
That's fine, that's fine with me. Just want to make sure we're Okay, that, that's the motion. We need a second.
I care.
Sherry seconded. Roll call vote.
Huber.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
After this, it gets a little boring. So if you guys want to go, you're welcome to. I won't have public comment after we do our public hearing. Sorry, Ray. We're going to talk chickens if anybody wants to stay, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Oh, good.
Right, right. We don't want that, but I was so happy to hear that there's a certain party involved and that they'll continue to be out there. See, that seems I'll be honest with you, that's what the state doing as far as I'm concerned.
I had enough time to sit down.
Public hearing.
Yeah, we decided to go ahead and advertise and make it a public hearing. So if you come to an agreement tonight, we can send it to the county commission next month. So if you can't, then we'll just do it again.
It's already up there. You guys want to look at it? Bill, if we, if we make any changes, do we have to meet again as a planning commission?
No, whatever you decide at the end of this meeting, you make a motion to approve and to send it to the county commission.
All right. Well, in, in the going along with the idea that this is an agricultural community.
Make that just a little bit bigger. I can read it, but it's green.
The it says, a person may possess up to six chicken hens, so long as the hens are confined in a manner not visible to the traveling public. As far as I'm concerned, that should stop with the word confined and have a period after it. I think the traveling public and the surrounding property owners, if they don't like looking at chickens, they should probably move to Sioux Falls or Minneapolis or
They allow chickens in the city. What about New York City?
Okay. My point is that I don't believe that that restriction, a manner not visible to the traveling public or surrounding property owners is I don't think it should be in there.
I agree with you because it's pretty vague because is it considering a road or a driveway or?
Right, the trail.
Yeah, but, you know, people have long driveways too.
That's right. Good job, Ray.
That's right.
Anyway. What do you guys think?
I agree. Chickens are chickens. It's not like having any different than having a dog or
Right.
cats, you know, in the yard.
Just confined, period. My, my whole fear is when you put something like that, like how it is written right now is we don't have the, the bandwidth to enforce it, complaint-driven system, right? So we put that in there to allow the county to have some power to enforce, but we don't really have the bandwidth to enforce. We're setting ourselves up to failure for failure. So I'd almost agree, just pull it out. I mean, and like they said last time, you know, we can go out there and we don't see them. But, but when you walk your dog at six oh five at night, they may be loose and I just don't, I just don't think that's something we can handle.
It's an invitation to a harassment type complaint.
Well, and it leaves a lot of room for interpretation.
Exactly.
You know, somebody decides, okay, I don't want anybody to see him. I'm going to let him run around the backyard and they put up a recycled billboard, you know, next to the garage.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Which is, which is more of an eyesore, you know?
The main thing is that the hens are confined, period.
Yeah, yeah. I agree.
That's just my take on it.
And last time we did talk about hens that crow, do we want to dabble on that? Are we cool if there's no roosters? Okay, just want to make, I mean, last time it was brought up, so I want to make sure.
Um, I just want to step back. So we're all talking about the same thing. So we are considering residential one, two, and three. Is that correct? Just two and
Three and three, yep.
Just moderate. So you essentially have an acre of property or about forty thousand point nine, whatever. Or you have five acres.
Yeah, it's a half acre or an acre?
Oh, oh, two and three, not, not the one. So what about one?
They already thinking when you do it.
Okay, so that's what I want to talk about. If you've got five acres and you want six chickens, why are we requiring them to get a CUP?
Shouldn't.
You shouldn't. It's five acres. It's huge. I've got more festins on five acres than I, there are one. I, I do literally and turkeys. And I won't do the turkey thing again. So I, I guess I would put out there that six chickens in R1 low density permitted.
I agree.
I would put that out there, but I think in our little paragraph, one thing we might consider, so if I, if I'm going to confine my chickens in a little chicken coop, that's less than a hundred and twenty, do I still have to follow the side yard, rear yard and things?
Well, we've
I know that. I think it's, I think it should be a permitted use. I don't think you should have to come in and get a hobby farm CUP if you own five acres for six chickens. Now, if you're looking at like three hundred chickens, then that would be maybe.
I'm, I'm low density residential. I have forty acres. If I wanted to have six chickens now, I'd have to get a CUP.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
And I believe if I'm going to have cows or anything, that's fine, CUP, but six chickens?
So hence my question is if you're going to have a coop, can you legally set it on the property line if it's less than a hundred and twenty square feet?
We dealt with this with a, a shed. The, the ordinance says if it's under a hundred and twenty square feet or smaller, you don't need a permit.
Correct.
We don't regulate it. So they could put it on the property line.
Yes. So I think in these paragraphs, we need to have a setback off the property line. So somebody doesn't have a little tiff with their neighbor and say, you know what? I'm putting six chickens on the property line. So at least they have to be now, was it Brookings that had twenty-five feet? I think it was Brookings. Yeah, they had twenty-five feet. Just as, so they have, so, so long as the hens are confined, twenty-five feet from the property line. Give you a grace.
All property lines?
Yep.
Okay.
All property lines.
Yeah. Yep.
So I think that's kind of reasonable when you're looking at, what is that, seven, eight paces? You know?
Not much.
I, I lay out fence posts. So I think, you know, six pieces, eight paces, whatever it is. So let's move. So is everybody okay with making that a permitted use in low density?
Yes.
I have.
Okay. So let's look at medium density. So now you're talking an acre. I struggle with a CUP even on an acre. How many people have bird feeders out there and have whatever noise?
We're not asking them for a CUP though.
No.
For, for two and three.
Oh, you're not?
It's a permitted use.
Yeah, we're making it a permitted use.
I thought it was under CUP.
No, it's permitted.
Oh, crap.
So you, you just want to have
permitted use.
District one, two, and three permitted use, six chickens.
But I thought that was under, scroll up.
No, it's well, that one might.
Yeah.
Two and three are conditional.
Right. So let's talk about two. Three, I understand. That I can kind of get that even though it's a half acre and it's bigger than most city lots. I can kind of get R3 because we don't have a huge amount of R3.
No, we don't.
There's one little area confined.
Correct. So.
Discussion again. So, yeah, that's what we discussed at the last meeting was the issue came up for the R2 and R3 because we already had nuisance complaints for them. And the difference between a hundred acre subdivision and a rural R2 area. So that's the only reason those came up.
So what do we think on forty thousand square foot feet?
Permitted.
Which is almost an acre.
Yeah, it's almost an acre. If they're twenty-five feet off any property line and they're confined, it's more than some people do for their dogs. I mean, you could have six, seven dogs.
Permitted, right? Without a CUP.
Up, up to a certain number of dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After a certain number of years.
I don't think six qualifies.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, and then R3, leave it in conditional use.
Because that's a half.
Half. It's a half acre. You know, most of those, I've driven those areas and they're closer together.
A lot of the moderate density is larger than an acre too.
Yeah, it is. It is.
By the time you get a house on a half acre and a garage, you've taken up a lot of space.
Yeah. And also it encourages them to be well-mannered with their chicken coop on their, I mean, CUP does, so. If getting a CUP for chickens is the reason they move from the county to the city, I guess there's bigger fish to fry. You know what I mean? Like, I would say, but I would say just realistically, it gives the neighbors input. You know, hey, yeah, this guy doesn't know and the dog's out barking all night long. You know, do we think they're going to actually confine their chickens?
I'd like to lodge a complaint about the coyotes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They beat me up at night.
Down by the river.
So how, how exactly do we want to read?
So the way Sherry presented it in R1 and R2, low density and moderate density, it's a permitted use, six chickens. We're going to change the first sentence to stop at confined. And they have to have a twenty-five setback, setback from all property lines. Article or District Three, high density, it's a conditional use permit. So you can put any conditions on it you want.
Yeah, I would have the same language there. I would have that twenty-five feet in the exact same language, but permitted, permitted CUP.
Gotcha. I think we're on agreement about it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to send that to, oh, you should ask for public comment.
I'm going to.
Oh, okay.
Public comment. Seeing none. Closing public comment.
I move.
I'll second.
Move it to county commission.
Yep. Roll call vote.
Huber.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Hummel.
Yes.
O'Hara. Welsh.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Well, after that, we have public comment. Seeing none again. Okay, take a motion to adjourn meeting.
Second.
Someone has to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
No.
Well, I'll make a motion then.
I didn't say anything.
But you can second it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Good job, team.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
We did, we handled that.
Very professionally.
Yeah, we handled that very well. They, they, they helped with their application, of course.
Oh, their application was outstanding.